Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, May 17th, 2023, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd please arise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Matthew Mitchell. Gabriel Medley.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Joan De Zero.
Here.
Dane Hatch. Paul Air.
Here.
Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
And Lonnie Stevenson.
Here.
Okay, correspondence and announcements, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Just to recap, the previous city council meeting, the city council approved that general plan amendment for the Park Avenue general plan, but they took no action on the plan development rezone for the mixed-use project. They seem to have concerns about the restaurant pad causing congestion on the site. And those, the other announcement is for those who have terms expiring, that'd be Susanna Ballard and Dane Hatch. If you'd like to reapply, go ahead and make sure you turn in your application to the city clerk's office before 5:00 p.m. on Friday, May 26th. And if anyone out there in the audience or watching on TV would like to become a member of the planning commission, they're welcome to put in an application also. That concludes staff's announcements. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Minutes of the last meeting, are there any additions, corrections, deletions, Commissioners? Anybody? I'll entertain a motion to approve then. Ms. Zero?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Zero, a second by Ms. Ballard, to approve the minutes from last meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceedings to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that anyone of the public that wishes to speak, limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 23-3764. This is a request to approve an extension of time for conditional use permit number 20-0030001 to allow an outdoor event area for a term of one additional year without providing the required parking improvements on 2101 McCulloch Boulevard, and that's North, 21 Boulevard, McCulloch Boulevard North, tract 100, block 5, lot 17, in the mixed-use uptown McCulloch Main Street, which is the MU-UMS district. Mr. Kearns, I believe you're presenting this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is owned mixed-use UMS district, outdoor entertainment and recreation is permitted within this district. The Partnership for Economic Development currently utilizes the site as a community gathering space known as Yard City. This use was conceived as a temporary use and was initially allowed by staff without requiring development improvements as part of the First Friday events. Based on the success of First Fridays and other events, staff determined a conditional use permit was necessary for the use of the site. On November 20th, 2019, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for the use. The approval contained a condition that the use shall be allowed for a term of two years from the date of approval. After that time, if the parking lot is not improved in compliance with the Parking and Common Master Plan, and the owner or applicant wishes to continue the use, an application extending the conditional use permit must be submitted for the Planning Commission review. On August 1st, 2022, at the request of the applicant and based on the impacts of COVID-19, city staff approved a six-month extension of time for the use from November 20th, 2022 to May 31st, 2023. Per the applicant's current extension request letter, the one-year extension will allow the PED and First Friday team to remain at the Yard City site for the next season of First Friday. They plan to move to the new downtown Catalyst Project location once its construction is complete.
Is that the end of your presentation?
One moment, technical difficulties. There we go. The buildable area of the site has been graded and currently includes the following improvements: a perimeter fence, portable restrooms, lighting, artificial turf, pavers, food and beverage truck, permanent power, and a stage. The subject property is included in the master parking and common master plan for tract 100. The rear 150 feet of the property should be developed per the approved parking and common plan, which includes paving and striping. The applicant is asking for this standard to be waived for one year. City staff has received no comments concerning the unpaved parking lot for the use and supports the one-year extension request. This view is from November 2022 and represents the unpaved parking lot. This concludes staff's presentation. We're open for any questions, and the applicant is also available.
Okay, questions of staff by Commissioners, anybody? I have one. Just for a point of clarification, who's the applicant?
James Gray is available in the audience.
Okay.
With the PED.
Private property owner, the owner of the property?
He's with the PED, Partnership for Economic Development.
So the applicant is the PED?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions of staff? I'm sorry? Okay. All right, the applicant's present, if you'd like to come forward and make a presentation, please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the commission.
I want everyone to hear me. Good morning, Chairman and members of the commission. James Gray with Partnership for Economic Development. To answer your first question, the owner of the property is Justin Janisak is the owner of the property. Just a couple things, if I could go through a quick history of what economic development is aiming to do. First Friday started in Hodel Way, just down the way, with a generator in 2018 to start a concentration of art, music, and culture in downtown. It was a part of the Vision 2020 project for a catalyst center for people to get together in a community. And so, like a lot of things that we do in the entrepreneurial world, instead of waiting for something to be built, you start trying to grow something from the base level. So after the first year, it was such a success that we went and leased this lot, went through the process. I can tell you right now, as of last month, this was the last one of the season, we had 50-plus artists on the streets, we had 55 local brick-and-mortar merchants involved in First Friday. Our last season social media reach was almost 70,000 Facebook, almost 25,000 in Instagram. We have 550 newsletter followers, and we've created a consistency of getting people in the downtown and how people rethink what their downtown means to them. And so that is a focus of that, so it was built as a concept of what a micro downtown catalyst could look like if you had power, bathrooms, stage, water, all the things that you have to turn key for an event. So we're asking for an extension. Currently, the owner of the property does have plans to build a multi-story building on it. He's not ready to go yet, and for him paving the parking lot at 23,000 pre-construction is just not something he's willing to do. So we come and just ask that, I guess our goal is to keep First Friday at full bandwidth before the Catalyst Project and the city investment is made so that they're mirrored and they kind of come online at the same time. So if you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
Questions of Mr. Gray. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, sir. James, a question that's coming from the community is, let's say there's another vendor that wants to come in once the Catalyst is built and up and running, and has someone already told you, you have it every First Friday during the season, or is that, I mean, what if someone's already got an event there, now you have no place to do your First Friday, which is really good, by the way?
Yeah, that's a great question. Haven't solved that, right? Like, that's one pay grade above me. I'm not the owner of the Catalyst Project, that's certainly something that the city is developing. And quite honestly, if there was an event bigger than First Friday, then First Friday would move. And I could see that happening. That's not outside of the parameters of why you're building public investment in downtown. You're trying to, for us, so many, I'll just tell you a genesis of the thinking of inside First Friday, so many events that are in Havasu aren't generally made for people for Havasu. They're made for other people, big boats, all kinds of things, but First Friday is made for people that live and work here. It's something that's directed right at them, and we believe that that has like a second stage power to it for community involvement. So there is going to be times that that's going to happen, and the money that, you know, PED has that's ready to be invested in the Catalyst Project, that's still going to be publicly owned property. So if someone else has already booked it, then that's how it's going to be.
So this property is being used for other events?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Lair.
So is one year enough time for the Catalyst Project to really be ready for you to move in, or should we think about two years?
Yeah, ultimately, that's a great question. We don't know. We're just coming in the smallest increments we can. The ultimate goal is to align with the major investment that the city and the winnings that we receive from the America's Best Communities to make that park a reality. So it would be great to align that, but I think going in year increments is fine. We have a great track record down there as far as how this space is utilized, the type of people that attend, and kind of the network that we're building in downtown. So we don't have a problem coming back every year to ask if that's a problem. I also just have high expectations that that's going to be built, but it's been in the pipeline for a long time.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gray. All right, this is a public hearing, and I'll open it up to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, now is the time to do it. Anybody at all? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission approve the extension of time for conditional use permit 20-0030001 to allow an outdoor event area for a term of one additional year without providing the required parking improvements on 2101 McCulloch Boulevard North, tract 100, block 5, lot 17, in the mixed-use uptown McCulloch Main Street District with an expiration date of May 31st, 2024.
Thank you. Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion, Commissioners. Commissioner? Mr. Diaz.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 23-3764, based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends. Wait, that's, I'm reading the...
Mr. Chairman, my second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Diaz and a second by Ms. Ballard to approve item number 23-3764 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Anybody? All right, let's call for the question.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Congratulations, good luck. All right, next item on today's agenda is ID 23-3766. This is a request for a minor text amendment to the Lake Havasu City General Plan to align the city's procedure for general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments. Mr. Kearns, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the first of two housekeeping items. This one is to ensure the city's general plan language aligns with the Arizona State statutes for major general plan amendments. The proposed changes to the general plan text are shown in the paragraph with the new language underlined and the deleted language struck through. Prior to 2022, Arizona State statutes only allowed municipalities to accept major general plan amendments between January 1st and February 15th of each calendar year and required they be processed by October 1st in the same year as filed. House Bill 2482 amended the state statutes and now allows submittal any time during the year and requires major amendments to be presented at a public hearing within 12 months of when the major amendment is filed, rather than within the same calendar year. This concludes staff's presentation. We're open for any questions.
Okay, if we have any questions by Commissioners? All right then, again, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please come former, please come forward, state your name for the record. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the table for staff's recommendation.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for Land Use Action Number 23-3766, a minor text amendment to the Lake Havasu City General Plan to align the city's procedure for general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments. This item is scheduled to be heard by City Council at its June 27th, 2023 meeting.
All right, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ballard.
ID 23-3766, a request for a minor text amendment to the Lake Havasu City General Plan to align the city's procedure for general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments. We make a recommendation to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Ms. Zero?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Ms. Ballard and a second by Ms. Zero to approve land use action item number 23-3766. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, let's call for the question. Oops, I went the wrong way. Okay. The next item on today's agenda is ID 23-3765. This is a request for another text amendment to City Code Title 14, zoning development code, section 14.05.04.m, general plan amendment to align the city's procedure for general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments. Mr. Kearns, your presentation again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the second housekeeping item, to ensure that the city's zoning development code language aligns with the Arizona State statutes for major general plan amendments. The proposed changes to the development code texts are shown in the new language, underlined and deleted language struck through. This concludes staff's presentation.
That was fast. Okay, any questions of staff by Commissioners? Hearing none? Once again, this is a public hearing, is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendation.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for Land Use Action Number 23-3765, a text amendment to City Code Title 14, zoning development code, section 14.05.04.m, general plan amendment to align the city's procedure for general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments. This item is scheduled to be heard by City Council at its June 27th, 2023 meeting with the Planning Commission's recommendation.
All right, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ballard.
I move to recommend the City Council approve land use action number 23-3765, a text amendment to City Code Title 14, zoning development code, section 14-05-04.m, general plan amendment to align the city's procedure for general plan amendments with Arizona revised statutes related to timing and hearing date requirements for major amendments.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Ms. Zero?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Ballard, a second by Ms. Zero, to approve land use action number 23-3765 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's call for the question.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, the final item on today's agenda is ID 23-3775. This is a review and discussion of the parking standards for multifamily development. Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. A little background, a little recap, with increased number of multifamily developments within the city, City Council recently requested the Planning Commission review and discuss parking standards for multiple-family developments in multiple-family zoning areas. The commission reviewed the standards at your April 19th meeting. After discussion, there was no proposed changes were suggested. However, the commission asked staff to gather information on traffic safety issues with respect to on-street parking in multifamily zoning areas to determine if there are any specific problem areas. Planning staff met with the police department to get their input as to if there are any specific multifamily parking problems areas in the city. There were no specific problem areas identified. However, if problem areas are identified, the Public Works and Police Department will take measures necessary to address the situation. That may involve painting curbs or posting no parking signs or whatever measures may be necessary. We do have a representative from the Police Department here, and we are still open to the discussion that the council, the commission would like to have at this point regarding this item. Do you have any other comments?
Does that conclude your presentation?
I would like to, I've got a few more items to discuss, specific things, so I would like to take this one item at a time, so we can talk about that at once, and then go on to the next item if that's okay with the commission.
Let me ask if there are any Commissioners that would like to address the Police Department? Ms. Wilson.
So the last time this conversation came up, it was mentioned that the city hasn't received any complaints regarding parking or there being parking issues. We have plenty of people that come in here that address the council or even city council that complain about parking issues. Does the Police Department receive any complaints regarding parking?
Would that be something one of the Police Department representatives can come up and address?
Do you want to specify, like, exactly? They receive complaints about parking, we can guarantee that.
All the time, probably.
But like, in the context of multifamily, is that where you're... Yes, in regards to the multifamily discussion that has happened, again, the city mentioned that they don't receive complaints. However, there are plenty of people that stand before us, and that is the number one complaint. So I'm just curious if you, if the Police Department receives calls in multifamily areas of excessive parking or parking on the street, or there being a safety concern.
No, great question, and Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. Troy Sterling, your Chief of Police. And no, we don't specifically. We have had in the past, but as Mr. Morris alluded to, we do work with our Public Works Department based on complaints, and first and foremost, we look to see if, A, are we having traffic collisions based on, you know, certain specific locations, what type of site distance there is? Those are the things that we're looking at, not even just parking, but in general, maybe even overgrown bushes or trees. So we look to see if any of those type of things have contributed to collisions. If there are, then we address those, but, you know, in the review process, typically we're involved in at least reviewing the locations of new development, like to at least have our input. And a lot of that depends on, you know, the width of the roadways, those type of things, you know, a lot of components that come into play, but public safety has a seat at that table as well.
Ms. Wilson, could you maybe specify an area that you might know about?
No, I mean, Ms. Medley mentioned last time that her concern, like South Pala Verde, right? So there are multiple multifamily with the high school there and her concerns, so that was not specifically, I'm just curious. I went back and thought about it later, I'm not a quick thinker here. So after I thought about it and asked, you know, the city mentioned there's no complaints, however, there are plenty of people that stand here and complain almost on every project that comes before us about parking. And Ms. Medley mentioned the South Pala Verde, which is very busy, and so my, I was curious to know if the Police Department had a different perspective on that.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, that is an area that I had heard, one of the possible complaint areas, it's an area that I drive by routinely as well. You know, a couple of things that we do look at is, you know, based on the width of the street and, of course, the speed limit, you know, in those areas, there isn't concern because there's plenty of distance for the visual component. It's, you know, you're able to safely maneuver based at the speed limits that are designed for those areas. There's no, there has been no issues, you know, based on that, so, yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
All right.
Continue, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, I appreciate your indulgence in this. The commission also asked for information regarding the number of working households that have one or fewer vehicles. Staff found information on the U.S. Census American Community Survey from 2021 showing that nearly 23% of working households in Lake Havasu City have one or fewer vehicles available. So this kind of indicates that one parking space for one-bedroom units will provide parking for almost a quarter of our workforce. Also, this is some, of some maps that show, in this case, the areas of one vehicle available for working households, and it shows basically the darker the color, the more likely that there'll be one vehicle available. So if you'll notice this kind of greenish color here, that's mostly single-family residential areas where you'd expect households to have more than one vehicle. When we get down to the darker colors, these are more in areas that are more multifamily areas where you would anticipate maybe small newly-started couples or single people in apartments with one or even fewer vehicles. So, and this is for one vehicle, and you'll see for no vehicles available, it's a very similar tale. Again, the areas that are zoned multifamily, they're more likely to have no vehicles available, so they take transit or walk or bicycle. So with that, that's the present, the information we brought forward, and see if there's any other discussion that the commission would like to have regarding this.
Any questions of staff by Commissioners? Go ahead, go forward.
Thank you. So on the previous meeting, we reviewed some items, including current multifamily parking issues or perceived issues. We touched on influence on development costs for parking recreates, the impact on the pricing for housing or rent, and effects for transit, walking, or biking options. Some other items that were possible for discussion that we didn't address were covered parking requirements, and then rounding fractions of parking spaces. So if you don't mind, I'd like to talk about those two items specifically. So for multifamily, parking is, covered parking is required. In the downtown area, the RUMS and the mixed-use UMS, all required parking spaces need to be covered. And all the other zoning districts, at least one parking space per unit needs to be covered. Is that something the commission would entertain, maybe looking at, revising, keeping it going? What's your thoughts on that?
Commissioners, anybody have comments? Ms. Ballard.
I have a question.
Because... Because you're saying when calculating parking spaces requirements for a fraction of a parking space, she'll be ignored, so therefore, in this presentation, where it says 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit containing more than one bedroom, that would revert back to one space? Is that correct?
Well, that, yes, in a way, if it's one parking space, but maybe we can hold that question for the next item? The next item would be the rounding, if you don't mind.
Ms. Zero.
Thank you, guys, for doing all this research, because we do appreciate, it helps having the information. The one question I have, because of where we live in the summertime, it's nice to have shade, for sure, but if we were to make a requirement to put covering on more than one space, is that going to hinder how many spaces they can put in? Because, you know, I'm looking at these pylons or whatever, I don't know, will that reduce it down so that we run into another issue of now we can't get enough parking spaces that we're saying, I don't want to cause a problem for people, but more shade would obviously be better for people.
Well, at this point, the requirement is one, is one parking space covered per unit, and that could be a carport, or it could be in a garage. And so, if it's a covered space, then typically, we ask it to be 10 feet wide, a normal surface space uncovered is only nine feet wide, so it's a little wider, and then it needs to be, in either case, it's 18 and a half feet deep, so it doesn't change necessarily the planning, if it's covered in a garage or else, otherwise, carport, then it needs to be 10 feet wide. If it's a surface parking, if it's not covered, required, not covered, required to be covered, then it can be nine feet wide, so it could allow more room for parking, more parking spaces, 10% more parking spaces if they're uncovered.
I guess I have a.
You mentioned about heat, I mean, that is something that, an amenity, if, something that, going, looking at other jurisdictions for multiple-family, didn't really find any instances where covered parking is a requirement, that could be provided by the developers, amenity, amenity for the residents or the condo owners or whoever, but it's not required in most other jurisdictions.
My thinking would be, why would we want to require more than one parking place for, for a residential unit, when citywide, every residential lot only requires one covered parking place?
And the question would be, should we eliminate covered parking requirement is another option to look at.
Exactly, so, that would be my thinking. Anybody else? Continue, Mr. Morris.
Thank you. So, the next item is rounding parking spaces, so rather than rounding up or down, the current parking code specifies ignoring any fractions of spaces. So, an example of some, something required 12.9 parking spaces, that number is what we call truncated or lopped off, so it'd be truncated to 12 spaces rather than rounded up to 13 spaces. Nearly all of the other types of calculations in the Development Code are rounded, up or down, rather than truncated, and this will make a small difference citywide, but in some specific instances, will make a bigger difference. So, let's say you had guest parking requirements is one guest parking space for every five dwelling units. So, if you had three or four dwelling units, you see, had a small project that was three units or four units, and then you would divide that number by five, and it would be less than one, so by the current Development Code, we would truncate it, so less than one would be zero parking spaces required. So, that seems to be the largest impact that staff would see if this remains at truncating it or getting rid of it. I just want to see what the commission's thought is on that, is it, that big a deal or a smaller deal, that remain, should we continue moving forward truncating rather than rounding up or down? I just want to get your input on that. Thank you.
Commissioners, anybody? Mr. Diaz.
So, what would be the staff's reasoning for, instead of rounding up, you, our current practice is rounding down, so like, your example, 12.9, to me, anything above .5 would go to the next number, that would be 13, but why would we go to 12? Just wondering what the, what the thought process is.
Well, that's, because frankly, that's the way the code was written, and so, that's the question we're bringing to the commission, shall we continue that? Why are we making an exception for parking? Then, the norm typically is rounding, so .5 and above, you would round up, below .5, so 0 through 4, you'd round down, from .5 to .9, you'd round up. That's the way it's typically done, so this, and this wouldn't make a huge difference, but it will make a small impact for the number of parking spaces. It may require the most one additional parking space based on our current calculations. If it's truncated down, rather than rounded up, then it may make a difference by one parking space.
So, either way, it's going to make, it's going to make a difference of just one parking place.
Yeah, that's the maximum, it could, you could be affected by one parking space, yeah.
Anybody else, questions?
Mr. Harris.
Ms. Zero.
In looking at it, it, to me, it still sounds like we're rounding down, if you, if you cut it off, you're rounding down to the thing, and I think it'd be better to have the option of going up or down based on what we end up, if it's 12.6, 12.7, you can round up, versus, let's just keep lopping it off at like 12.9. So, I think that would be a good thing to go ahead and give them that option to round up or down based on what we end up with, especially since we're only looking at probably one more space, but even now, one more space can sometimes make a difference for people.
Anybody else? Mr. Lair.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that one space might make, I mean, there's potentially, it could wipe out the feasibility of a smaller project.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know, every foot counts, even with covered parking, it seems a stretch, you know, because you're always trying to maximize the site. So, I think I'd probably leave it as is.
And I would be of the same thinking. Yeah, that one parking place can make or break a project. Anybody else? Mr. Diaz.
Jim, for the, for the laypeople out there that are listening, can you, can you get more specific when you talk about making or breaking a, they want to know that.
Mr. Lair.
Well, each site is so, you know, many sites, you're trying to get as many units on a site, you know, just to get the financial feasibility of, I'm not a developer, so I'm just kind of speaking here, but, so it's all comes down to parking, and it comes down to landscaping, and it comes down to stormwater retention, and all those factors come into play, you know, when you're looking at how a site is developed, so I would think, you know, stormwater retention becomes, seems like that's a big issue now, and having one extra space, you know, I don't know, that can make the difference between doing something that's a surface, you know, detention pond versus a requiring a chamber system, it all kind of impacts the overall design.
That one little additional 200-foot requirement on the site could prevent a complete unit that would require like 400 square feet, so it's just, just the trade-off that was made years ago. Mr. Diaz.
Does the city follow ADEQ, or do we use, go above and beyond? Do we just follow their standard?
For parking?
When it comes to water retention, he's.
Oh, water retention is a separate, whole, separate item outside of obviously this discussion that we're having, follow Mojave County Design Manual, Drainage Design Manual.
Which follows ADEQ, okay.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Zero.
I guess I'm still trying to understand, we're talking about a 10-foot or a 9-foot parking space, probably, for most places, and we get to 200 feet would eliminate a unit, so I'm trying to get the math to go here. Part of the problem I'm struggling with is, yes, they might get one more unit, but then the people don't have the parking, which is what we were looking at to begin with, is that we keep cutting back on the parking so they can get more housing in there, and then the people are saying, I don't have any place to put. Now, from the statistics we've seen, 25% of the people only have a car, so one parking spot is probably sufficient, but I guess that's what I'm struggling with, is I certainly want them to be able to build projects and finish up what we've got going in the city, but I don't want to hinder the people that want to buy the house to have a decent place to park their cars and be able to live a nice life in the unit that they're going to buy, so I'm, that's what I'm struggling with right now.
Well, every unit has to have a parking place, and then if the parking standards, the equation comes out with like 12.9, and there's 12 units, and I, and I don't, I'm not doing the math right now, but you got that .9, which would require another one additional parking place, which may take out one unit, so it's just kind of a trade-off. You've already covered the parking for the unit, but that one additional space might, might preclude the space required for the amount of units that it was designed for. Ms. Ballard.
I guess the question here in why we're reviewing this in the first place, is it to acquiesce to allowing contractors to build more space on land, or is it to provide adequate parking spaces for people that occupy those units? Even though a one-bedroom unit is dictated to have one parking space, very often, people living in a one-bedroom unit are two people who might each have cars. So, is the goal here to provide adequate parking for the people that live in those spaces, or is the goal to provide more building units for the developer?
I think this item was directed to be brought to the Planning Commission by the City Council, I think they had concerns about what they're hearing about parking overall. That's a complicated issue, it's a good question you posed. What's the balancing point between providing adequate parking and providing too much parking that requires so much parking that you're losing out on units, dwelling units, and we know we need dwelling units in the city, so, again, it's kind of chasing your own tail, what's more important, a dwelling units, the number of parking spaces, and is there really an issue with our parking? Is it something that is a problem? We've been under this Development Code now since 2016, we haven't seen any real evidence of any issues with parking, but again, we were directed to bring this before the Planning Commission and talk about it, so you've put a lot of discussion into it. What are your, again, what are your thoughts? Shall we move forward with any changes? How do you feel the balance is between the number of units and the parking requirements for it? Do you make any suggestions we should have moving forward?
From my perspective, if you compare, like, other municipalities, Phoenix, or, you know, other, other places, and I've lived in apartments and condos and so forth before coming back to Lake Havasu, you're, you're given one parking place, and per, per unit, and if you have a husband and a wife, or, you know, a couple that lives there, you got one parking place, and you know that upfront. There might be some other public parking someplace, but if, if we've covered the parking requirement for the units, we've pretty much done our job. So, that's, that's my thinking. Ms. Zero.
I, after looking at this, and what really got me was that, if you can go back, look to the, Mr. Morris, to the one on the statistics of the people, the census that you did, because I think that helped me a lot, because it's looking at, we have about 21,139 workers that are 16 years or over in the households, and out of that, about all total, they, there's about 22% that have one car or no car. So, we're looking at a quarter of the people that probably live in these units that don't, one space is probably going to be adequate for them, and like you said, I, the fact that the police have not received any issues, and then they're driving around, they haven't noticed any issues, I'm tending to lean toward leaving it as it is, because I think it's been working. The perception's always sometimes different than the reality of what's going on, but looking at the statistics, two vehicles in that are, it looks like for the people that are, most of the people here, they have one car or no car, they take the public transit for that.
All right, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris.
Just as, to recap, so we've gone through the discussion, where do we go from here? So, if you have any direction to provide to staff, we'll be happy to take that. If you do have proposed changes for the Planning Commission, we'll be happy to put those together as Development Code change, go through the whole Development Code process, revision process, and then, which includes a public hearing before the Planning Commission, and then goes on to the City Council for their action, so, I want to see what, if you have any other direction for staff.
Mr. Tuneman, do you have comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. I just want to kind of back up to the covered parking we were talking about, I don't think we got a consensus, or I didn't get a feel for, are we all okay with the covered parking requirement, or do we want to eliminate that parking requirement? The covered parking.
Why would we want to do that?
Chairman?
From your perspective?
From my perspective, the only reason to eliminate it would be to help the cost of the project. It would eliminate that cost to the developer to have to provide that covered parking, and it would allow a little more room on the site to provide more parking, because as Luke stated, the code requires covered parking to be 10 feet wide, where uncovered is nine feet and width, so it might help out with some of that stormwater management and planning on the site. So, that's, that would be my, it's not a recommendation, but that would be a reason to eliminate it if you wanted to.
How long's the covered parking requirement been in existence?
Been in existence for, I think.
Since day one?
Forever, forever in Havasu terms.
Yeah, yeah, it's always been there.
Do we have a reason why?
And we're what, 95% built out, or more?
Yeah, no, and, and I just wanted to bring it up, because I felt like we didn't get a consensus of, of that, or the, the question wasn't, you know, perceived to you like that, so, just, just for discussion, that's all.
Okay, I appreciate it. Ms. Zero.
I think my opinion on this is that we leave the covered parking as it is, because it's always something we all want, wherever we are, and that we also leave the parking code, we make the, let the council know that we have in fact reviewed this, we've looked at that stats, and I think leaving the parking requirements as they are right now, I think still fits what we've been doing in the city without any issues.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Tuneman. Anybody else? Mr. Diaz.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to kind of agree with Ms. Zero on that, because a perfect example would happen at the City Council, the last one, where they, that one, that one project down there with the restaurant and the bike parking and the drive-through, and they, on a one-on-one basis, I think we leave it the same, and then they come back on a one-on-one basis where you view it, and if there's an issue, it could be addressed at that time, and they could, they're going to go back down and redraw that project and see if they could make it more feasible in people's minds with the parking issues, so I agree with you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you all, thank you, Mr. Morris.
All right, thank you, so it sounds like no proposed changes.
No proposals.
Thank you.
All right, this is the time in the meeting when we call to the public, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the commission, please come forward and state your name for the record, we may not respond.
My name is Martin Stansbury, I'm a local real estate broker, property manager, property owner, and a Mojave County Constable. I have three nine-plexes, I manage about 250 units in town, and my daily activities as a constable is dealing with multiple property, multiple-unit property owners. I hear and deal with this parking issues every single day. I currently took on a brand-new project at the corner of, I believe it's Avalon and Palisade, which is a five-unit complex, which is a total of five individual buildings, basically five tiny homes. There's a total of five parking spots. I've, it's only been occupied for about 40 days, I've had to respond there four times already to deal with parking issues, because there's a total of five parking spots, one for each unit, I'm sorry, there's six parking spots, one for each tenant and one extra, and the argument is always, who gets the extra spot, how come they've been there for three days, and how come I have to park in the street, where do the guests park? So, my experience on the ground, dealing with this every day, is nothing to what I just heard today. I don't believe one spot per unit is nearly enough. Even the city, city statistics is 75% of the households have more than one vehicle. So, based on those statistics on my five-unit building, it should have nine parking spots. All of my, my three nine-plexes are all 1980 and older, they all have one covered parking spot and one open spot for each unit. I have zero problems there. One of the questions brought before you was also a particular spot that is an issue. Well, that's really easy, Swanson is an issue from the big, where it starts till it ends. My office is at the corner of Smoke Tree and Swanson. When there's any events downtown, I can't park at my own office. I used to be able to park across the street at Albertson's, but now I can't even park over there, it's so full. So, as we continue to build out, I don't know where we're going to get resident parking on Swanson for, for the units that are being built now. I have a, I just took on a 16-unit complex on Cursage, 16 units, 19 parking spots. I can see how this is going to go, it's going to be a constant battle with parking. I don't want to live in Newport Beach, most of us are from California, we moved from that nonsense. I don't want to drive around for an hour and a half looking for a parking spot at my own office. And I heard Mr. Harris say that we're 90% built out, but my understanding is, I hear the mayor say it all the time, we have a population of 60 or 61,000, but our build-out's for 99,000, so I think we're about 70% built out. As the traffic increases, it's just going to continue to be a bigger problem. My thoughts, anybody wants to talk about it further? it further, I'd be happy to, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the Commission? Okay, we'll close the public, call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Our next regular scheduled meeting would have been June 7th, but we don't have any items. So, with that, I do need to make an announcement. Since we don't have a meeting on June 7th, this is Maria's final meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. She's retiring after 20 years, over 20 years of service, so she will be greatly missed. And sitting next to her right now is Shelby Henigan, Henigan. She'll be taken over as the Planning Commission Secretary.
So, she's the one we get to beat up on now?
Yes, yes. So, I just want to congratulate Maria on her years of service and thank her.
Congratulations, and farewell, and welcome, Shelby. Anything else? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.